I'd like to call. I have a meeting of the. Meeting of the whole to order for Wednesday, February fifteenth. We'll call.
That's you say yes.
Yes.
Yeah, sounds.
Here.
Leonard.
Here.
Leonard.
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna suggest a change in the agenda. We're gonna move public comments of. Um, currently number six of in front of number five. Before closed session, so that if there's any people that have public comments, we will call for those at that time. Is everybody in agree with that?
To change the agenda. Move item six to five and vice versa.
Thank you.
I'll thank you, Beth.
All in favor? Hi, thank you. All right, so we'll start with our department head reports, city administrator Patty.
Um, hey, everybody. Beginning this week, tree, tree clearing, trimming will take place for four days at the airport. This is done for better flight path for future airplane traffic. The project is one of many done through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation BOA. As part of the FAA Airport Capital Improvement Program. As part of their long range planning for the airport. Um, this is one of the projects for the airport development slated to be completed there. Another project that will take place soon. Is the upcoming crackfall project. Amory Airport is in the first group of airports to be built and completed this spring, which is great news. It's very exciting. We've been waiting for that to happen. And it's seen significant deterioration to the runway, taxiway and aprons there. Uh, we did have a sponsor meeting with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics last month. And the airport program engineer was able to move our snowing of the equipment building design on toward two thousand twenty-three schedule. So we need to get at least thirty-five percent of the design completed. To see what we want and what that means for eligible space and facilities inside, then we can make decisions. Uh, the building is slated to be constructed by two thousand twenty-five. All projects for twenty-three other crack ceiling, tree clearing, design, construction of soil removal, equip, equipment building. And possible purchase of mowing equipment. The mowing equipment is a brush cutter. And is a possible item for funding. Uh, grants, I mentioned last month that the city will hopefully be applying for the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Safe transportation alternatives for rural schools, which is the Stars Grant. And that is due by March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, we've got that on the agenda tonight. There's a resolution. Uh, what's really nice about this is we're getting help. Um, to do the application for free. They're helping us with that, and I've also got someone else helping us with the design, so we don't have to pay for any of that. Um, I need to come up with cost estimates for the application for the design. Uh, let's see, like I said, I don't believe we need to have designer engineering done yet. Which makes a process much easier, so we don't have to have that in place. Our focus would be sidewalk around Hillcrest and crosswalk area on Minneapolis. Um, I know when we get closer to having design and engineering. We will propose that the school help pay ten percent of the engineering and design. As well as installation of the sidewalk costs. The city would pay the other ten percent, so they pay a total of eighty percent. Minimum grant, like I said, last month is a hundred and fifty thousand. And then the tap grant. Through the Wisconsin DOT is fairly competitive, so we gotta try to go for this. Because the other is gonna be. Not as easy to get. Um, that's why it's worth trying for. It's geared towards our municipality, which meets the under five thousand population criteria. And an update on the vibrant spaces grant is that seventy-five applicants have submitted for the grant. Which was due by January thirty-first. Waiting to hear if we are one of the thirty that are chosen. I hope we are. Uh, finalists are selected by March ninth. And award announcement will take place May first. Uh, car charges. The application through GM was complete for car chargers at Suline Park. There will be two dual charges stationed there with Excel Energy helping them get up and running. Amory Chev and the City of Amory will be co-sponsors of the car chargers. Um, GM will pay the cost of the AC level two charges, chargers. And shipping to Amory Chevrolet. The city will pay for the power to the chargers, which is a minimal cost by the public to use the chargers. This will offset the cost of power paid by the city. We're gonna probably have to somehow set up something. Where we charge. But it will be a very minimal cost, like I said, so. Um, just a side note, a press release was made. By GM and the first charging stations are installed in Wisconsin, Michigan through the dealer community charging program. The rationale is at least ninety percent. Of the US population lives within head and by house of a GM dealership. And it's a nice addition to Amory with the help of GM. So, uh, Clifton Larson Allen is here this week to do the two thousand twenty-two audit. And I will be attending the winter conference for the Wisconsin City County Manager Association. March first through March third in Fond du Lac. And I can't attend in person at that meeting for March first, but I'll try to attend virtually, so. Any questions?
Yeah. Good back to the airport.
Absolutely not going to allow any of that. Um, what we did is we signed, when we first started doing this process of getting grants. We sign assurances. And what there is to get the grant is we only allow things at the airport that are airport related. So we cannot allow. Anything further moving forward, you know, we're getting this grant money, so we have to stick to what it's airport related, so.
Okay. We got that cleared last time through the, through, uh. The Bureau of Aeronautics, so, right?
I spoke with them and they said absolutely not. They said we can't allow that. So I have to listen to what they say. They're giving us the money, so. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Patty. And. Um, next Ben Jansen. Thank you.
Mine's a little shorter. So, like Patty said, the auditors are here, they actually were here today and they'll be here tomorrow. So the vast majority of time has been split between that and the upcoming election next week. Uh, we've been really busy giving them all sorts of checks and stuff. I know Taylor's getting really sick of running back to the storage room to dig checks out of the bins. Uh, I've also been working with Bird Capital and with Patty. Um, lot of pre-recorded stuff for five million that you guys passed resolution for, so a lot of info on that. Uh, we actually had our due diligence call yesterday morning. Um, fill our whole questionnaire, so that's moving along. And then finally, uh, Terry, I've been working on getting Peggy up to speed with elections training, everything else. This is gonna be a nice. Hopefully quiet one for her to kind of get acclimated, so. It should be good to get her up to speed and ready. Yeah. Any questions?
Do you want to make any announcements about the election? Next week as far as polling times? Already raining on your parade, Taylor. Okay, thank you, um.
Afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
Um. Well. I'm gonna try to wing this because it's my first time here. And, uh. Passing the buck, but I'm just gonna say I'm gonna wing it. Alright, so. Um, looking at some of the stats that were. Sorry. Oh, I care. Some of the stats that were compiled for me, uh, today. From my experience with the, the snow that we've had for the past. Uh, month. Usually there's a ton of accidents, but there's only been three, which is pretty good because the speed limit is still twenty-five miles an hour. I think that's. It is slow, but it's gonna prevent. You know, especially in the summer, kids getting hit and, uh. And accidents in the winter and stuff like that. Um, parking, uh, they're, they're giving the citations out for the parking violations that they see out there for the winter regulations and stuff like that, so they're out there doing their jobs. Uh, school responses, twenty-four responses in the last, in about thirty days. For all different types of stuff, so. That's just gonna be probably going up the, the nicer it gets, uh, some truancy, uh, some other issues as well. Uh, we also had one of the biggest thing that's gonna be hitting overtime again is gonna be the mental health responses. When there's not enough beds and then with the other nearby areas, they have to drive all the way to Winnebago and now you're calling in another officer from. Home to do another ten to twelve dollar shift on overtime, so. Uh, the powers that be will not have another hospital yet near in somewhere central in the state, which apparently they're working on, but. That's out of our control. Uh, other than that. Yes. Just one drug paraphernalia incident and that was it. I mean, everything's been pretty quiet because it's cold out and. But we will, we'll, we'll keep that up. Any questions?
What dictates whether. Whether an officer says to go to Winnebago or whether the sheriff's office is responsible for that?
Uh, I believe that is. It's, we're the ones responding to it and it's our incident in the city that we're the ones who take, take care of that.
And why wouldn't we call the sheriff's office to come in and do that?
That I do not have an answer, but I will have that answer for next meeting.
I can speak a little bit to it. That's what I do for my day job, so. Um, part of it, a big part of it is jurisdiction and some of it comes down to where the issue was initially reported. So we had a circumstance a couple months ago where the situation was originally reported in Richmond and then the. Client was going to be chapered. Out of Amory and so there was an issue with like, okay, does Amory? Bring them or does Richmond bring them? And they decided that Richmond would bring them because that was where it was initially reported. Um, but a lot of times it just has to do with where the report gets taken and so sometimes if that jurisdiction line is. Complicated, then the county will step in, but a lot of times it comes down to the local. Department, which is really unfortunate.
I'm just trying to figure out why. If I pay my taxes. I should not, and the county gets the same amount of money from me as they do from. Somebody that lives, for instance, a hundred feet outside of our borders. Why should that just automatically fall on us? Seems to me a conversation with Brent Walk would be him.
And I'm also assuming as I'm learning things here too, that if. If all the Amory officers were busy on another call and this one couldn't be held and then they would resend a Polk County Sheriff to the. Location, they would end up handling that. And have the appropriate resources and officers or deputies to. Transport the people. So the problem we have here is we have officers who are working twelve hour shifts and now you have. One, maybe the eighth, ninth hour of their shift getting one of these calls. And. I wouldn't want one of my officers to drive to Winnebago, especially in this weather that. We've been having to deal with. It's normally like a four hour, five hour trip. Now you add the snow and. All the road conditions, it's gonna be dangerous for the officer, the subject and, you know. But also driving back home too, so.
Sacred Heart is working on getting approval for an expansion to add a significant number of beds. So hopefully that will happen in the near future and the number of drive. Number of trips out to Winnebago will be. Decreased. Um, the problem is that. There is only Sacred Heart on our side of the state and everybody tries to send. Their people there, uh, and there are only like twenty beds, so. Winnebago is unfortunately the next best step.
Be interesting to talk, to talk to Brett. I know that's, that's kind of an area that nobody wants to do. I'm aware of that. But like I said, when I pay the same amount of taxes to Polk County. As everybody else and yet we get. I wouldn't use the word stuck, but it gets to be our responsibility to take care of. In many cases, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but in many cases, kids that are not. Residents of the city of Amory anyway. And so. You know, there should be some equity there, I would think.
Like if a crime occurs, we can't deviate to other departments, we have to take care of it.
Exactly.
Uh, one of the big issues.
A lot more stress on an eight-person department than it does on a twenty-eight-person department.
Also, we're not the only agency that's experiencing this. This is. One of the huge talks of when I was at the Chiefs Conference, it was. That's their number one problem is you got guys, you know, driving from Superior to go there and that's. They're giving their guys credit cards to spend the night at a hotel before they drive back, so.
You know, it was a good herd, actually, we were talking about Zed Air Claire.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a significantly shorter drive. It's still a drive, but. Um, and. And most of the time, these situations occur when the. It, it's typically, in my experience, it's Ben children. They are being hospitalized against their will. Because if they are choosing to be hospitalized, then parents can drive them. But if they're being chapered, then law enforcement has to take them. It's not an option for us to just say, nope, sorry, you have to drive them.
It also takes off the officer out of our city. Sure. And. I'd rather have an officer on our department take care of the problem because they'll, that's the city they work for than someone from a. The county who might go, uh, you know, I. I wanna get off on time now and I got other things to do, so they won't put their best into their. Their job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job, first time. Chuck, come on. Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Oh, sure. As you can see, I left some pictures up on your, uh. That's my friend, that, that is the truck. That's the one that, uh. Greg Listney and Casey Frederick are gonna go down and pick up on Sunday. Um, they're gonna go down. I'm not sure if they're gonna drive all the way back on Sunday or. Anyway, I just. Read all some pictures, but you guys might wanna see it. I think it looks pretty sweet. Um. Mike Addison is actually going to be doing the lettering on the side. Uh, this is Amory Fire and then also we're gonna have it to where it says proudly serving citizens of each township. I'm have Mike put that on each truck. I think they deserve it. So I think. Um, for pages and radios. Are here, um, they're all plays, uh, program. Uh, Casey Frederick. Finally got the cable and software for the radios to be. Programmed and you got it done during the, I just gotta. Figure out who's gonna get them. So. Um, I said Casey and, and Craig are going down on Sunday. Um, on February twentieth, K three fire is going to come and they are going to demonstrate. The piercing nozzle that was approved for us to get. Um, training's at six o'clock. You guys wanna come down and take a peek and see what it does? Um, I really wanna test it out before you.
You know, what's the date again?
February twentieth at six o'clock is when our training starts. Um, I called, uh, Amory Auto Salvage. We're gonna have a car down there, down here at fire station. Um. Just so, just see what we can do with it. And then I'm sure K, K three fire will probably bring some of their stuff to, to demonstrate also, but. Uh, pretty exciting.
New toy. Of that?
New toy.
New toy. But other than that, everything's been. Going good, um. And slow, which is okay, um, but anyway. That's all I have. Anybody have anything? Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Sound of competition.
I can beat it.
Two. Pick one of each. Hey. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Oh. In between. Um, so February fourth, we had a really successful Love Your Library event. And I think several of you were there, stopped by. Um, I know the mayor was there and people were really excited to. See the building, believe it or not, there were still people who had not been in the new city hall yet. So. Or have, and everybody was really impressed. Um, on March sixth and seventh, I went to Madison to attend the library legislative day. So that was a lobbying day to. Let elected officials know how important public libraries are to the state and what a good investment they are for funding. Um. Your big handout is the annual report summary. I don't know if you all have ever been given one of these. So this is my first one to do. It's a requirement to submit a very long detailed report of activities, circulation. Square footage of the building, all kinds of information has to go to the state Wisconsin DPI for approval. And they hold these records. So this is just a summary of it and I brought it in today because I thought there were some really, really cool members. Uh, the first one is that our circulation increased thirty-four percent. Last year. Over the previous year, and I know some of that is because we were open more. We didn't have COVID closures. But I think a lot of it has to do with, we're in an exciting new building. People in city hall doing business, they come to the library, people were doing something at the library, they go up to the police department, so. I think we're seeing that in this increased circulation. So it's a really great number for librarians to see is increased circulation. And, um, to brag a little bit, we're the tenth highest circulation out of fifty-three libraries in the iflas system. Well, I think that's pretty incredible that. A town this size has a library this great and this busy. Um, there's all kinds of other information there. I think the public computer sessions are looking at the fifteen hundred. Those people who come to the library because they don't have a printer at home and they need to log in and print something. Or they don't have a computer or internet at home. So that's quite a bit for a town our size, so I'm pleased to see that people still need public computers. Not everybody has one at home, like a lot of us might think. Um, there's, there's more information in there and I won't make you go over it all, but if you have any questions, let me know. I have the full annual report in my office. And the ones that's officially approved by the DPI, it goes onto their website and you can see every library in the state. For many, many years past statistics. So this was just kind of some fun information to share and let you have an idea of what the library was up to last year. Um, two other things. The small handout I gave you is Brooke Christensen, our youth services librarian. Started a book subscription program. And it's geared for kids and teens, but there's also an adult section. And, um, it's just a way to try to engage young readers with things they're interested in. It's really easy for kids to think. I only like the Wimpy Kid series of books and I don't know what else to read because I've read all twenty of those. So this is a way for book to. Get a name, get some interest, find out what their reading levels are. And every month they get a backpack filled with materials that they might be interested in. And the kids get a snack and an activity. I don't know if the adults get a snack. So, yeah, people can scan the QR code to sign up and she's communicating with the school to let them know, because I know that's just. One of our constant goals is maintaining literacy and a love for reading. Because that makes better citizens in the long run. Um, the very last thing is our community mural project is live. So if you don't know what that is, the Amory Women's Club commissioned Paul Oman, our local artist. To create a giant canvas. It's about eight feet by four feet. With scenes from Amory. And he created as a paint by number. And now people can sign up, register, come with your group. And find your number, find your paint color and paint on the canvas. So that's set up downstairs in the library. And the Women's Club is gifting it to the library, so it will be up on the main floor. And it's beautiful. So you can go to our calendar on our website. RSVP Church Group. Um, knitting club, book club, whoever you wanna bring, but we're looking for people in the community to actually help paint this community mural. Any questions for me about the annual report or anything else that's going on?
Good job.
Thank you.
Can, do you have a fax machine down there?
No. We can scan and email. I know some state agencies still require actual faxing. And so we send people to the places in town that do it, but it's expensive. It's about a dollar a page. So we encourage people to see if they can find an email contact and then they can scan and email from our machines. Yeah, you're welcome. Yes.
That has been fixed. They, I got that in my purse, that'll take part of it, but they. Right, that was broken up in the ceiling. It just had a crack. And it was letting fumes out. I think since that's been fixed this week, I don't think we've had any issues that way.
I haven't noticed anything, no.
Well, that has been taken care of. KBK came and took care of it.
Okay. That's awesome. Trying to know, very good.
No, it's nice that that's, that's been taken care of. It was pretty rough for a little while.
Yeah.
Found it and fixed it. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks Heather. And Jeff, I guess let's hear from you.
Mine will be short. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Jeff.
Uh. We're working on the brick across between Brick Street and Broadway. It's cleaned up. Like to thank SNF for their helping that. They came right west. It. Everything is flowing so nicely right now. It's okay, seems that way, but it's very nice. And just all the, all the mornings I've talked to were very helpful and we will fix up the yards in the spring. It did make a little bit of a mess. Uh, we've already used up all the backup we had. We're gonna get a little backup batch today. There's a few paddles out there if you haven't noticed. But yet we're done. Um, right now we have quality at the shop. They're doing the telemetry system for the list stations. Water towers, everything, so if something goes wrong, we'll know that sooner than later. At night it'll call us if something's wrong, so that'll be really helpful. Uh, been a lot of time spent here at the senior center or city center with. Little spells and different things and. Archers gotta be cleaned up, done, they're out of here and they did a really nice job keeping really working and clean while they were doing it. And the community center, we've been up there shoveling the rest and trying to keep everybody happy there too and. Busy, busy.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Taylor.
That's what she's gonna talk about, Bob.
I'm wondering.
All right, in the ba- past month, we've been busy collecting the remainder of the property taxes. We collected through the end of the grace period, which was February seventh. Got a report up to the county on the eighth so that they could do the settlement statement. Um, we've also been collecting fourth quarter utility bills. They were due today. If you have not paid your bill, please do so. Charges and sent. This is soon. Assistant Vandy is currently in full swing and running through Friday, so if you wanna come and vote in person early, you can do that. And then the election will be taking place next Tuesday. February twenty-first polls will open at seven AM and they will close at eight PM. So come on out and vote. There's only two questions on the ballot, I think, so it's a pretty short one this time. And then the recycling committee took a tour of Polk County's recycling facility today, so I'm hoping they got a wealth of knowledge. Was not able to attend with the auditors being here. I was busy collecting information for them. All right, anybody have any questions?
Oh, thanks Taylor. Thank you. Thank you all for your updates. Um, next on the agenda, number two is resolution, uh, resolution zero two, twenty twenty-three. It's for the Stars Application Resolution of Support. Um, the title itself is the City of Amory Resolution of Support, Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Uh, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six safe transportation alternatives for rural schools. Um, or STARS cycle application by partisan infrastructure law. Supplemental transportation alternative program initiative. That's a mouthful.
Yes. So it's an exciting opportunity. I think we should move it on to full council, make a motion to do that.
For a second then.
Right, motion's been made and seconded to forward resolution zero two zero three, or zero two twenty-three to the full council. Um, all in favor?
I know.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next on the agenda is the city insurance RFP. That, uh. Who's gonna talk about?
Generally, our, our general liability and, and the buildings and. Vehicles, those types of things. Um, we just wanna see if there's. A better cost out there. It's getting to be quite expensive and you know how that goes with insurance.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like when you shop around, you can maybe get the. Price a little bit lower and. Um, at one time, I know we, we worked with the League of Municipalities and they've got some offerings. Hopefully that comes in last. I don't know, we'll see, but. It's kind of our hope is just at least try and see.
And so this would be posted. Immediately?
So, yeah, once we get it.
As soon as we have approval on it and then, um, it looks as though. Uh, you're expecting or asking for proposals to be back by March fifteenth, so we will forward this on to full council. Yes, so I would accept a.
I'm making motions to the full council.
Thank you. Awesome. So motion's been made and seconded to for the request for proposal for city's insurance. And to full council, all in favor?
I do.
I. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is the discussion on the safe for us to school.
Kinda covered everything in your report.
Yeah.
Um. We're still kind of moving forward, so we just did the resolution as you obviously know. But we just had to seek out estimated cost to put the sidewalk in, engineering costs, things like that to put in, yeah, I probably should lower that. To put into the application eventually. We don't actually have to have exact costs, thankfully. Um, we were worried we had to have full design plans. We were, we weren't able to apply for it, so. We're just kind of moving forward. Um, I'm sure it'll be on the. March agenda as well, just for more updates, but we're just, uh, moving forward and trying to get everything tied up for it.
And I think we're looking for you, Ben and I, which we totally. And I think what we're looking for you, Ben and I, which we totally spaced it out with the audit.
Yeah.
Um, we'll actually give you the actual plan, so you can kinda see what we, what we proposed and put together. That'll give me a couple weeks to look at it and kinda see what we're proposing.
What's the goal for having that complete, so we can move forward? Um, to be able to actually forward the information, so.
Oh, um, well, the safer routes to school, I've got it in, in form, in PDF form, and I can go ahead and get that out to you right away.
Okay.
And then you go ahead and look it over and then you can kinda see how that correlates with our, with our grant. And it give you a better picture of kinda what we're talking.
So has the grant already been applied for or we're applying for the grant? That's what this is for. Got it. And that's what I thought. I just making sure we've got the timelines correct in my mind.
As part of this, do we have a plan to educate the community on it once it's actually up and running? Cause we can put all of this together and people still won't use it if it doesn't exist.
I think we will probably do that. We're working very closely with the school district.
I'm hoping there would be signage that we listed, is, then everybody knows, not just people who use it for school.
It'll be in quite a length of sidewalk.
What's the plan for the sidewalk on Bridge Street?
I don't know if there is one yet. I know it was just called out in the, in the full plan. There's actually like a map. You can see that out, tells you where there's no sidewalks in the entire city. Um, I don't know. We could include it in the application.
Oh, and I was, I'm glad you brought it up because I know it's, it's that full length of Hillcrest, which is a long stretch and then.
That, that was, Hillcrest at least is doable, but the bridge street. That's, yeah, it's gonna take some engineering, creative engineering.
So, yeah, but for sure, Hillcrest.
Yeah, it has, and, and, yeah, it has to be done, cause all the bus traffic that goes out through there, if we don't have that.
Is that moved out? There will be moved out and then stuff that was, you're sending them, okay?
Um, all right, so at this point in time, we'll call for public comment or any community updates. Does anybody have anything?
I had a reminder that the offices are closed on Monday. So we're gonna be closed Monday as president's.
And the date would be the twenty, or twentieth, twenty? Thank you. And then what about the library?
The library will be open.
Okay.
Open.
And what about your hours actually this week, considering no school for a couple days? Are you open regular hours this week? Okay, that's good to know. Anybody have anything else? No? Okay. All right, at this point in time, then we, I will. Read the information on the closed session, Wisconsin statute nineteen dot eight five sub one sub C. Uh, city administrator, police chief and mayor considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data. Of any public employer over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. So I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion when we go into closed session.
A second. Great, and roll call, please.
Marx.
Yes.
And Blair Call?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Lam?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Manner?
Yes.
Elkin?
Yes.
You're in closed session. All right, we are back in open session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Right, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.